Okay. We have one hour left in which to work today. And I'm mentioning that because we have a hard stop at noon. Because there's something happening on the other side of this wall that they need to set up for. So we will -- yeah, that's right, it's a dance, I'd forgotten that. At 12:30 or something.
12:50.
Anyway, we need to be out of here by noon. So I will --
Unless you want to stay and dance.
I'm sure that you'd be welcome to do that.
Yeah.
We have two major topics or items to talk about. Next on our agenda is some discussion about public safety. We've talked about some of that, so let's review where we are on that and see how much time we need to spend with it. The other piece, and I want to frame it for you before we get to it. We are no -- there is no way we have time to talk about the other priorities and objectives for 2016 with any depth today. These are all big issues. And so I think the most effective way to try and deal with these today is for us to capture what the issue is, what define the priority, and then determine what's the next step. Are we going to move it to a subcommittee? Are we going to go to committee, the whole? Do we need a future retreat or some sort of longer session to really get at these issues? And that was my best thinking about how we could at least attempt to deal with those in a very limited time. Does that work for you? Is that reasonable? Okay, great. So let's go to the public safety piece. And I'm just going to open the floor and then pretend that I can control the conversation. Does somebody -- Scott, do you want to start us off?
If I may, Judy, unless you'd like to.
No.
Okay. So for me, the two topics here would be, when I put the agenda together, I was trying to capture, of course, everyone's input. And I kept this kind of high level, but really there's the police study, which I feel like we've already talked about.
Yes, yeah.
Unless there's something else, we're going to revisit that in a few months and then look to the timing to execute that. For the fire study, I guess what I was hoping to get out of this conversation is a little bit more discussion around what is the -- not delving into the details of it, because I think the Public Safety Committee is doing a great job of that and needs to, you know, finish its process. But what I was hoping to get out of this was a sense for kind of the who, what, when, where, why, and how. How is that going to come forward? When will that come forward? What does that look like? Jeff, to your point, you know, what is that, what exactly is it that that committee will bring forward to the council at some point? Is it going to be a recommended set of policy decisions? Is it a briefing summary that then the council has to decide what the policy decisions are? So just, I guess it's really, for me, just trying to help frame what we're all looking for from the Public Safety Committee with regard specifically to the fire study. And so I don't have all those answers, I just think that's a healthy discussion to have.
Well, I'll start a little bit on, as the chair of that committee, when we were given the task of reviewing the Fitch study and analyzing that tremendous amount of information, that I feel that that was our first step is to understand the information, which we've been trying to do, and get a take on ideas for moving forward. And they had a lot of recommendations. And I think that we discussed that the short term, most of the short-term recommendations were all administrative management things that, you know, we, you know, didn't really need to delve too deeply into, because that was the way they were doing business. But there were a few, some of the long-term recommendations that were more impactful to the department, and certainly some really brought some reaction from the public and things like that. And so we just needed to understand how they came up with their recommendations and whether, you know, just so that we had an understanding of this whole thing. Because I've never looked at the way a fire department does business before. And so it's been a real learning curve, and so to have that opportunity to try to understand it better was like the first step. But I think that the committee has always been, you know, we're not going to figure out how many trucks go out on how many calls, but the overarching issue is that we were to, you know, help decide or help bring forward to the council on what level of service is really the picture that we need. And we need to first understand where it's at and the challenges and everything. So it's a huge, huge project, and the study was very huge. So we're still in that process. I think we will not make a decision, we would only come up with, you know, a recommendation possibly, or bring, sit down and say, this is what we all need to look at collectively. So that's kind of --
Some sense of what I think our tasks are going forward and what we plan to bring back first to the Public Safety Committee and then to the whole council. So first of all, and I think this is really important. I look at the Fitch study as not, this is our focal or duty to reduce costs. I look at raw data as a list of options to consider. And I want to state this publicly, and I've stated it before, I am not advocating for less fire stations. I'll just say it, I'm not. I don't know what the right answer is. I know we have some capital needs for a couple of fire stations that need some improvement. I think we need to discuss that. But, so I think that's part of the, how do we make sure that our response, both for medical emergencies as well as fire, that we are meeting our goals around response times? What I hope happens from the Safety Committee is that, and I touched on this earlier, but that we talk about what is our expectation about outcomes? What's our save rate? What's our turnout time and time to respond? This new world system has a much better definition in terms of what kind of call it is. So, you know, I would hope that we would say to ourselves, to our public, this is the kind of, this is the level of service that we're going to provide you. But I want to say one thing about the Fitch study relative to the data and the calls. That information has been verified, it's been reviewed with the fire administration, it's been reviewed with the bargaining unit, and from a factual number of calls perspective, turnout time and that, no one is arguing that that data is skewed in any way. So that's a good foundational place to start. So what I expect from my fire chief and what you all should expect from the administration is that we're going to make some recommendations about what's the best structure to either maintain or improve our ability to respond. Can we do business differently than we are today? And there's two elements to this. So we have to get the structure and the way we are organized, and who does what work. If we're going to recommend a different way of doing business, our collective recommendation is one thing. The other thing, which is equally important, is it has to be marketed. And so we may think, let's, so one of the suggestions that's there is that we look at basic life support that we contract at. Well, that's great. But if we go to the table and we can't agree between the union and management, then we're going to go in front of an arbitrator, and we're going to wait a year or two, and then there's going to be challenges. And so this stuff just doesn't get done like we think this is a good idea to implement. So I think that, and the other thing I would say is, and I think this is important because we, there's always a risk of getting whips up, which is, as policymakers, as legislators, you should be holding us accountable for outcomes. The how-to and how we negotiate and the strategy and all of that is very much, in my view, embedded administratively. And I think, you know, I think it really avoids this crossfire that we potentially give you. And you all as legislators or policymakers, frankly, in my view, should not be in that crossfire. You know, if there's an issue on the how-to, then it resides with the mayor ultimately. And so I think the big issue, as I've listened to all of it so far, is just because we did business this way 100 years ago, doesn't mean we have to do business this way in the future. And I think that's going to be the big problem. And it's not going to be without conflict, it's not going to be without animosity, maybe more than animosity. But I just think that we have to think differently about it, and that's what I'm going to value from all of your input to me. And I think, I want to think about it that way. I think we can get better. I think we can respond, we can put more assets on the street or advance life support. We have a great save rate. I mean, we're a gold standard, Seattle's supposed to be a gold standard. I mean, we, our save rate percent has been much better than Seattle. So, but I think there are some areas that we can improve on, and we can get better at, and I think we can get more cost effective. That, you know, all of us didn't come to this to do these studies, the public safety and other departments, and become more efficient, because we just one day woke up and said, Chief, let's structure this differently. We are under tremendous financial pressure as a municipal government, and that's what we're charged with responding to.
Thank you very much for your candor. I'm sure everyone around the table appreciates that. Some members don't suffer.
I can't agree more, Mayor. I mean, you've heard me at every meeting talking about this. We need to decide what level of service, I think that is our only job, is to decide the level of service in our community. And for us to be lobbied to add, you know, back units on the street and every, and all that, that is so not our job. I have no idea what that does to the outcome. That's the fire administration and your job, and you will never hear me say that we should be doing anything other than --
I appreciate that.
-- than figuring out what that level of service should be. And that in and of itself is a job. I mean, the Fitch approach is unique, it's different from the level of service benchmarks that have been established nationally by two other very well-known accredited organizations. And I think we need to, we are going to rely on your administration to help us understand the differences between those, because if we're going to assume the level of service benchmarks that the Fitch study proposes, we need to understand how that's different from the National Fire Protection Association benchmarks, and what that means in terms of dollars, and what that means in terms of outcomes in our community. But how do you get those levels of service? How do you, you know, manage your staff to make sure that 90% of fires are contained to the, to the room of, you know, that they're started? I will have absolutely no way of helping you do that. That is what Murray and his team need to help us understand. The only thing I would add to this is that the piece that we haven't looked at, and having done a lot of efficiency work in my, as a consultant and with a previous career, we haven't looked at the management structure of the department. And a lot of times, savings are in management. And so I think one of the pieces that we would like to just, at a top line, have an understanding of is are we efficiently utilizing management resources as well? And that I know was not part of the Fitch study. It sounds like they do that work if we want them to, or that is certainly something that could be learned in-house, just in comparison to other departments of similar size.
That's a good suggestion. And, you know, a lot of our public doesn't realize that, maybe with the exception of about half a dozen fire department employees that are not represented, everyone else is battalion chiefs, captains, you know? So it is, when you're coming, for someone who's come from the private sector, you have as well, this is a, is not a management structure that you would normally see. So there is, there certainly is that challenge. I think the other observation I had about Fitch, when I think about the city of Tacoma, when they were going through the recession, they found themselves in a very difficult position of having to lay first responders on, firefighters, police. They had no choice, they just didn't have the dough to support it. And so we never had to do that, thank God. But what Fitch did in their recommendations, and I think, again, not recommendations, suggestions, is they did this full range of, if you only had so much money, what would response look like of two stations, or four stations, or six stations? So they went from one end, one extreme, to the other in terms of what can you afford and what you want to afford. And I automatically went to this place where I value public service, I value the work that our firefighters and police do. I'm not about interrogating, interrogating the level of service, I'm just not. I want to find a smarter way of doing it, but I value the level of service that we have.
Great. I think it's easy to get off, because this is such a big topic, so I want to go back to, I think, what Scott Murphy was asking initially, which is, what is the role of the committee, and what is the committee going to bring back to council, and what's the timeline for that? Because that's the, I think, the question that we're looking at today, rather than all of the different recommendations of Fitch, or suggestions, or whatever we're calling them. But, you know, just understanding what's Public Safety Committee going to do, what's the timeline that they're going to do it, and when can, when and in what way will the rest of the council be weighing in on these important issues?
Well, Brenda said, you know, as far as wins are, I think we're just looking at the top level of what is our deliverables to the community of this. I mean, I think right now our deliverables are good, very good. So, you know, we're looking at that, but, you know, come back, we're going to have another meeting in February where the administration is going to come in and give us more information. And then we're just going to have to see if the committee feels that we've had enough information or we understand it. You know, I don't think we've decided that yet.
To do what?
To come back to the council.
Okay. We have heard from fire administration.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and so let me just say sort of this other piece that is a challenge. Right now, we are in arbitrations with the fire committee. And that has to get settled really before we start talking about any changes to operations. And that labor strategy, I think you'll understand why I'm saying this. Our strategy about how we go into negotiations is very much like the unions, which is, it's a confidential matter. We're not going to go, why would we, you know, broadcast to the world and to the union? Here's our strategy about how we're negotiating, we want to negotiate the contract. So I want, I want all of you to know that, and we'll have that discussion. But it's very much going to, there's going to be a very specific negotiation strategy that deals with a variety of issues that improve service. And I want you all to know what those are, and I want you to know that from whatever point you would start that, and we're negotiating very hard to do that. And we may have success and we may not. That's just the way it works.
Okay. Or you can add something here.
Yeah, I, oh, I was going to circle back to something that was said earlier. So I think we all look forward to the administration coming forward in February and giving their vision or view of what changes could or would possibly be made. But again, back to your point, Brenda, if there's a, if there is a, another lens that needs to be looked through, i.e. this management layer, that's work that I don't believe, at least thus far, has started. So that's another track of work that maybe needs to get, if it's going to be done, that needs to somehow get some legs, and, you know, we need to just understand what that looks like going forward.
Yeah, there's a whole backstory to that, which, so.
Right, right.
It --
Paul's up first, then you, Jeff.
Well, I guess what I would just say, as a person who's not on the committee but has tried to follow in track, first of all, I appreciate the work of committee, and if this is the right, if there was a reason for committees, this is an obvious one. And I appreciate the mayor, what he said. What I think is important is somewhere in all of this, that we really are looking at some service delivery models and options different from what we have. And I have not, I'm not hearing that we're not going to do that. I mean, but I, I think coming forward, it would be helpful to sort of see what those service delivery models and outcomes associate with the microfiling, number one. Number two, it's a concern, not a criticism, but in the back of my mind is that whatever we see, and Ray, you're quite correct, it may take a few years to play out and our procedures have to be followed, whatever we see in terms of savings, it's important to not get focused on just what's happening in fire, it's the whole general fund. And so I just want to be careful not to look at just one piece of this, but to be able to come back and look at the whole budget and the impacts of the general fund. Some folks sometimes get locked into just fire and don't, you know, remember that we have to balance out a whole lot of things. So when it comes back, I know, for me, I want to try to see that balance.
That's great, thank you.
So having been the third committee member, I agree very wholeheartedly. I agree very wholeheartedly with what both Brenda and the mayor, I guess what all of you have said. But I feel like there's this expectation, and I mentioned it earlier, that the committee is going to be the impetus of what can change. And I don't believe that to be true, because of what Paul said, what I mentioned earlier about looking at our, our vision for what we need to do out of silence. And for every level of service, there's a cost. And I alluded, but there's no action based upon it, that it almost feels as though this needs to become a part of the budget in the bigger picture. But I completely agree with the mayor. The Fitch study can, within that vacuum, define efficiencies that create opportunities for our excellent firefighters within the same amount of resources to evolve to a different delivery model. We have no control over that. We also need to know what are the key performance indicators, or the metrics of the level of service that matter? And that's not something we can understand too, so I don't want to wash our hands of it. I think we're on a really intense learning curve, and we're providing two perspectives for the public, but there's definitely crossfire. And I wasn't pleased with the last meeting. And so I wanted it to be, I think we just need to be very thoughtful. So when you're saying, what are you going to bring back to us? I'd say, what do you want us to bring back? Because I don't think that we have a product that feels like we're going at a pace that is much too quick with a series of meetings, this expectation that on February 10th, the chief's going to come in and we're going to know. It's not. We're going to have to get that with labor, we're going to have to get, we're going to look at the budget, we're going to have to say, what sort of priority is, if the administration says, you know, we need to put some more resources in there? So I'm concerned that we're talking and our community and our labor partners have this expectation that's not realistic.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. And let me just say, from my perspective, by asking these questions about, you know, who, what, when, where, I'm not suggesting that this should be, yeah, I'm not suggesting this should be rushed, because I think we all recognize this is a very important decision that has long-term impacts to our community. It's critical that we get it right, more importantly than we get it done quickly. But on the other hand, you know, I guess I'm just looking for that, do we think this is something that comes back in 20, mid-2016? Is this something that drags out for another year? And I'm not hearing that be the case. But for example, to your point about what do you bring forward, Brenda brought up some great points about the different ways to define levels of service. I would hope that the subcommittee could delve into those various methodologies and decide which one makes the most sense for Everett, based on input from the labor, the administration, and bring something forward. And if that can, if that kind of work can be done, then I think you can start to go down a path, because if you have too many different sets of metrics, how do you, how do you even figure out what the possible outcomes could be? So anyway, I --
Can you talk to Judy about maybe revisiting with Fitch to, you know, once we get a better handle on what we're looking at, maybe we want to have a conference call?
To kind of crystallize that aspect of it.
Just to understand how they differ.
So with those level of service and those KPI indicators, there are going to be some that are favorable to one perspective versus another.
Right.
And I don't want to get caught in the crossfire of trying to decide which ones are meaningful. What I am concerned about is that our public understands what level of safety they exist in, because it seemed to be one of concern at the last meeting. And I'm hoping that they understand how helpful or how, what are really, we are a high-performing city with a high-performing team. When I led an annexation, like I said, there's two things that got us in, fire and police. And I believe that we have the best firefighters in the state, but I'm just concerned about getting in that crossfire. So when we start talking about it, we are an architect, finance, a finance, a executive person, trying to say which indicators are most meaningful. I don't think that we're the right people to do it. I think we're the right people to understand and concur with what the administration recommends.
Oh, yeah, I don't think we, I, yeah.
I'm not saying it, I'm just --
Okay. Scott?
And I, I guess I think, since a lot of this, a lot of the efficiencies are depending on capital projects, whether it's the location of stations or how stations are designed, I think we in the whole city need to see this as the beginning of maybe a 20-year process. I mean, you know, we're not going to, it might be one domino every three or four or five years that falls in terms of how we get better efficiencies, especially those related to capital aspects of this. So anyhow, so I think we need to, as we go forward with this, we need to see that we're beginning a process that future councils, future council members, and future administrations will have to continue working through and looking at as well.
Yeah. So I think what I've heard is that the committee is working to really understand the content and implications of the study, working with the mayor and the administration to understand what it means or could mean for the city. That there's still some, let me call it research, the academic in me wants to call it research, that still some research to be done, some analysis to be done, and that at some point that is all being brought back to the city council in the form of information, as opposed to, not necessarily recommendations for action, but this is what it says and here are the suggestions. Is that a fairly accurate summary of what I just heard?
I think so.
I missed what, something that you were saying.
No, it's, I think if you, candidly, if you're looking at 2017, all the vacancies that are in the budget in the fire department are posted, and it's our intention to fill all of them.
Okay.
Because our, you know, we're going to have natural turnover, and if we propose a change operationally, it'll take time to implement it. But as far as 2017 budget is concerned, it's business as usual. So I, and the fact that we're filling vacancies, no one in our voting should be concerned that we're not going to be there and be responsive. But some of the representations that was made to the Public Safety Committee are dealing very much, I touched on one earlier, and that was the overtime matter, which had gotten completely out of control. There's a whole backstory to that. But the other one is the whole issue around minimum crew size. And while they may not have described it that way, there are, there are issues that they're advocating for in future negotiations that were not openly talked about in terms of, you know, we need to do great quality work and we need people out there. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. and we need people out there. So there's a lot of moving parts to this that affect us. But I don't, I've never heard one of us ever say, you know, we're doing this study so we can reduce public safety coverage. No one has ever said that. What we said is, is there a smarter and more cost-effective way to do it? And I think as long as we stay focused on that goal, we're, we'll be fine.
Thank you. That, that's helpful clarification, I think. And I appreciate all of the comments that you've made on this. It's helpful to me. So I would guess it's helpful to other citizens of Everett. I need to move us forward. I want to ask about, there's an item here on public meetings, the Wall Street building and council chambers. Can someone clarify what that is for me?
Well, I believe, if I may, I believe the Wall Street building discussion already has happened. This is to talk about the security of that building.
Okay, that's my thought. Okay.
There was a light on the ninth floor.
Check that one off. Okay.
I don't, don't know that I can necessarily speak to the public meetings. Maybe that's...
Council chambers?
Council chambers.
Well, the council chambers, yeah.
Well, I, I don't know if this, I remember, and I think we still have challenges. So if you have a public meeting on the eighth floor at night, there's got to be a way to get people in and out. So there is a, there's just some mechanical or, you know, I'm not sure how much we need to deal with it, but there just needs to be the ability. Because if we have a public meeting, it's open to public, we can't get to a meeting, well, that's a problem. So...
Okay.
Now, we need to get your data operational.
Great.
As far as council chambers go, I mean, several years ago, I mean, we talked about really looking at security procedures within the chambers. And what I would say is, I don't feel very comfortable that we have a good crisis response plan if something were to happen in the council chambers. I don't know what our, I don't know what we're supposed to do. We talked about possibly fortifying the front of the dais with some bulletproof, at least so we could duck and hide. Is that done?
It is, yeah.
Oh, that has been done, yeah, okay. But just a review of what we do if something goes down and where we go to.
Okay.
John Gurus, Dan Templeman, and a couple of other folks actually are working currently even more, the chambers making it safer is already done. But they have their whole, they actually have these monthly strategic safety meetings regarding the chambers. I know this because they contacted me in regards to even the logistics of where they sit and stand in the chambers. So it's just not something that they are putting out publicly. But I think that if you had a personal question that they could answer, that they wouldn't be, you know, giving away anything in regards to your safety and the plan, they can get to you guys.
And I would add, I would add that I have just recently, in the last couple of weeks, I've noticed some citizens that have just walked right up to the dais when we're sitting there. And I have asked Chief Templeman to please keep an eye out for that and instruct the officers that if they see that, I mean, certainly it's up to us to please say, you know, please stand away. Because that's just not, that's just not their space. It's not the public's space. There's plenty of space in that room for the public, and then we have our space. And so I've asked the chief to help us to keep a little bit of separation there.
Are you talking about the police officers, little dog?
No, she, she actually was, she actually was calling.
I guess, it was Dawn, who was waiting for the attention. Interesting fellow, but anyway.
I think we need to understand the procedure.
Yeah, we need to understand, because I have no idea.
How does it go if someone starts shooting in there? Do we go out the side door? I don't even, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Out the window.
Duck and cover. Yeah, I have, I have no idea. And I know that there's been very rowdy groups. And it's, it's something that we all need to be discussing in all of our businesses. But of course, then this is a very public venue. It's, I think it's very important that we understand what the procedure is as well.
And so what I think I heard is that there is a person or several persons who you can go to individually to get those answers. Because if you get the answers in a council meeting publicly, it is then public information.
And it's also a case-by-case, you know, different type of scenario for different, different type of situation. But definitely what we can do, because of having that whole how many that you can talk and everything, definitely we can get the police chief, I think this is okay, isn't it, Deborah?
Well, or his designee.
Yeah, but I mean, his office to meet a few of you at a time, to be able to explain what they're doing as far as the safety in the chambers. And he'll just get all seven of you. So everybody can get updated.
It can happen in executive session.
Our city attorney says we can do it in executive session.
Okay, good. There you go. Executive session. Everybody hears it at once. Great. Okay, I'm going to move us on to the piece that we aren't going to have time to discuss fully. Okay? We have, we have four, listed four other priorities and objectives for 2016. What we want to do in the next 27 and a half minutes, I'm never that precise, but we'll try, is to capture what the issue is. Let's define it. And then let's say, where are we addressing? What the next step is to addressing it? The Streets Initiative, Transit Transportation Update, Downtown Parking, and the Climate Action Plan. So someone, I'm purposely not looking at the mayor at the moment, but what, what, talk to me about this Streets Initiative. What's, why is that a priority? What is it from the council's perspective? I'll let you talk in a minute, okay?
I'm not sure what more we need to talk about today on this. But I would say, qualify what I just said by saying, General Government Committee has taken the initiative that the mayor and Streets Initiative has addressed. At the council, we have set, there's sort of three areas of work. One is budget, which I think insofar as 20, this year is concerned, we've done all that we've been asked to do. One is policy, and I think there's some work being done that might deal with some land use questions that may, that are not yet ripe for discussion. And the third is advocacy. And I think we're outdoing all three of those things. We are, at least I'll say, as the chair of that committee, or maybe I won't be, but I think we've done all that, we identified those things. I think we're there, but we're absolutely ready to support what has been, I think, just a great initiative. So it's, I'm not sure what more we need to do here, but we need to have an open door to continue the work on the advocacy and policy side.
I would say there's a lot more that, in this than what is being currently done. And I think that you actually are one of the council members that brought it up during the Streets Initiative process. The council was feeling very out of the loop of all the different recommendations and the different information that was out there. And I think that there is a, the city is doing a great job with the coordinator in moving this forward. And there's a lot of work in the Safe Streets that came out of it. But, you know, as somebody who recently talked to quite a few of our citizens, this seems like it's a top priority of our citizens right now. And so it needs to be one of our top priorities as a council, that we are doing, not, not the, I think that the Housing First Initiative is moving forward and the public safety initiatives, but there are so many more. Advocacy is only one of, there were six primary buckets of work, and each of those buckets of work had a ton of different initiatives. And so I think that it is something that requires a lot more time than we can even dig into now. But it does belong absolutely on our priorities outside of the work that's already happening.
Okay. So from your perspective, anyone else can chime in here. You need more time on it. What's the next step? Is this a take it aside for a special meeting and spend a couple of hours just really working it? Is this, send it, continue working in a subcommittee?
Well, I'm the liaison on this issue. And so as the liaison, I am starting to attend the weekly meetings that the coordinator and the staff of the city have on this issue. And I think it is my then responsibility to bring it up at council, what's happening and report back, but also then maybe request that we get kind of ongoing information on additional work that might need to happen, that might require some council action. And so I think it's just, it's good that it's here. I think there will be more to come.
So it's communication, updating, and so on. Great. Thank you.
And I agree with that. I think it's a question of what's, you know, I don't want to go into that.
Okay. People comfortable with it?
Yeah, I just want to say from the Public Safety Committee, you know, it's a huge priority there and people, you know. So one of our issues is to get the communication out as to what we've done, how things are progressing. And I think we've done, made great strides that way because of all the website. And I really, hopefully, most of the, all the committees, I'd like an update from the chief, because he talks about this. I think it's just something that we need to keep talking about. We have a lot more to do, but we've already done a lot. And we're making headway. And these are some positive things. I think people need to hear, need to hear some of that, too. So it's both sides. But the communication, I think, has gotten great as far as the website. I really think they've done some nice jobs.
So really continue the good work you're already doing and keep it front and center. Okay, great. I'm going to move us on. If, go ahead. No.
I haven't, yeah.
One minute, Jeff.
The only thought was that before, when we began to embark on some of the ordinances and things, we were tethering things together. And just if you guys, when you look at that, that tethering, we don't want inaction because we keep waiting for other actions to occur that may not be in our control. So that's my area of curiosity about the Streets Initiative, is what aren't we doing that we could be doing? Is if the timing's not great, should we still proceed with it?
Okay, so more communication. Mayor Stephenson?
Just try to do this quickly. So I really see this issue being part of this vision process, because we're going to have to develop, I think, a 10-year plan. And it's going to, if the community embraces it, it will stand the test of time. And so I think that that's important. Staff is, you would just be amazed, I think, every day there are a group of folks working this issue all the time. And there are coordination with agencies and county. And then I think the other part of this, and this may be a 2017 discussion, is, is what is the organization? Is there, do we need, you know, we have Julie now, but do we want to have a permanent person leading this effort going forward? I think that's a discussion for the 2017 budget. So there's a lot of moving parts. I think some of the procedural things, we got land uses, you say, we got some tweaks that will allow us to do integration into a little bit of housing into work that we're already doing. A capital project will require some legislative changes to make that happen. But we're up to, we're up to get started.
Great. Thank you.
I might just ask for a report on the priorities of all the recommendations. So the council at this point has still just seen the list of 60-some recommendations. And I don't know which ones, right, which ones are rising to the top in terms of being the most important.
Okay, great. So a sense of some next steps here.
Which, you know, working, working progress.
Great. But it sounds like it's good progress. So congratulations on that. Let me move us on to the Transit Transportation Update.
There we go.
I'm sorry.
Don't choke down there.
And I was like, what?
No, you have 45 seconds.
No, and I've got Tom here, but I need to kind of narrow this down for what we...
There were two issues I surfaced. I didn't recall asking for updates. There were two issues around transit that I wanted to surface. And one was the way we get citizen input, was TAC an effective way to get that or not? You know, I served on the TAC, times there were frustrations I had. Just now, the first liaison meeting with, in my role as liaison with TAC, it seemed like there was a lot of input and talk about transit. So I just wanted to surfacing that as an issue, I think. In one neighbor, Council on Neighborhood meeting, Ray had mentioned some possibilities for how to formalize citizen input into transit, whether it's through TAC or some other way. The second question I had, I think I wanted to surface was a concern about, and I'm sure the administration thinks about this all the time, but the long-term viability of Everett Transit, at least a six-tenths of a cent sales tax. I hate the idea of raising it, but on the other hand, I want to make sure we have a viable transit system as well. And so I just wanted to get that idea out there in terms of, you know, where does, you know, what happens with Everett Transit? It just seems in the last few years, because of budget constraints, we've had to pare down, pare down. So we're worried about the long-term viability of transit.
Okay, so, so some concerns that need to be discussed and surfaced around transportation and Everett Transit, right? Is that a reasonable way of saying that?
That's what I, when I shared with Scott what I had, because those were the two things I was...
So since today is not, we're not going to take action or go into deep discussion about this, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to have it in a discussion in an open council meeting? Does it need to be set in a special meeting? What?
Well, I don't know.
How do you deal with this?
It occurs to me that one option would be to have this topic brought forward at the General Government Subcommittee Meeting, so that there could be more in-depth conversation there.
And I would tell too, Scott, if you want to spend some time with the administration figuring out how this gets brought forward and the timing as well. So just wanted to get those issues out there.
Okay, so...
Let's do that.
Question, I do have Tom here. Is there anything you would like him to address for this body?
At the moment, I would say, I would say no.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, thanks for coming.
Don't leave yet. We make up questions. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to move this into the committee, and we'll work with the administration to gather information and figure out next steps. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I know I'm pushing you guys here. But I think we need to, with these, in particular, we need to just decide what your next step is. So thank you. Downtown parking.
Well, with, yeah, with this one, Deborah, I was just looking for an update. I know there's been a lot of work done on that in the last few months. And I just was looking for, when do we expect that to come forward and...
I'll turn over the page, he's going to have 30 seconds.
Perfect. And I know there'll be more in-depth later, but...
And as I'm sure you're aware, I'm ashamed for crying, we took the day off Saturday.
I knew somebody would remind us of that.
Good planning on his part.
Parking's small.
I thought that early.
So we're nearing the end. We have a parking forum in August. It's at the inventory in September, October, it depends on the numbers. And there was another parking forum done in December, a little different, a little different take, and some preliminary information was provided. I guess to give you a general sense, in terms of utilization, we're nearing back, we're almost right back to where we were in 2007 before the economic downturn. We're still seeing, same, the same old problems in terms of employees parking downtown. We've always had still kind of enforcement issues that we need to deal with. They will be coming back with some additional recommendations. And we've also had, you know, some casual conversation with some of the downtown stakeholders regarding some of the other enforcement tools that we've always talked about, meters or favor park and so forth, and getting kind of a general sense for what their stomach is for those types of opportunities. So currently you've got scheduled, I think, February 10th? Kind of believe so? February 10th, again, Ryan was on, so I'll need to double check with him to make sure that we're, we're set up for that. But very soon, he'll be coming forward with a consultant to give you a complete overview of the study that's been done and the results and recommendations going forward.
Great. Thanks, Dave. I mean, I know a lot of good work's been done and look forward to hearing more about that.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Tell him to take the rest of the day off.
Oh, God.
At the time it came up, I think we also had citizens bending our ears, got the ongoing parking problems around the college, the hospital, and with Wazoo ever coming in. So just want to make sure that doesn't get lost in shareholders. What are comprehensive, if there is a possibility, the comprehensive approach to deal with that problem as well.
Okay. Great. Good. So this is more communication update at a, at a council meeting. That's the action. Great.
We'll bring it back at the council.
Thank you. And the, the fourth item is a climate action plan. This is where we solve the global warming problem? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. You knew that was on your agenda, right?
I did.
Someone help me with this.
The issue is, and I, it's on our agenda, because I think there's an urgency to this that is maybe not always so obvious. It's one of those things that...
It's one of those things that you tend to think about in long term. But I think there are several reasons why this is a much more urgent issue. And we're moving forward, so that's the good news. I think the need to bring it forward is important. And the reason I say that is, one, because just from the regulatory standpoint, this is a regulatory issue under jurisdiction of EPA. Moving forward is important because of the implications that it has for our public works and for water. I think we look back 20 years and see the statistical frameworks that we use to measure storm events and water and other activities. It's abundantly clear those frameworks are no longer applicable. If we project that 20 years out, it should be abundantly clear that there will be dramatic changes on our horizons that include how, what will be the impact of water, water demand, water sales, will be the impact of water treatment, will be the impact of storm and surface water events, impact on our public utilities and infrastructure, and the need to create frameworks that provide for mitigation, reducing greenhouse gases, as well as adaptation, responding to these changes. Those frameworks are going to be in place soon, and so the need to stay in front of that process, I think, will serve us all in all of our areas. So I just wanted to bring this forward because I think there does need to be an urgency and deliberateness to our work. I think we're in, we're in progress, so that's the good news, and getting the work. That's all, that's why I wanted to put it on the table and keep it front and center.
Okay, Jeff and then Brenda.
I guess what my question is, I'm trying to understand, this action is going to be chaired and done by the administration, is that correct? I'm trying to understand where it lives, and I think it lives in administration, and I'm wondering about the field of experts that sort of monitors the plan as this develops, because I believe that's a world where you can have a lot of different outcomes. And so I'm wondering, who's kind of managing the process so it isn't, it isn't here and it's not here, it's right-sized in terms of a plan?
I guess if you're asking me, the question is, it goes to the planning department. It's brought forward through the Planning Commission with a set of recommendations.
So it just seemed like, I thought, we kind of chose the consultant, was that in concert with the administration or, okay, perfect, that's what I was kind of thinking about.
Yeah, I think it has land use ramifications, how we build, concern about the rising level of the sea. I think that's one issue. We did get federal help, if you recall, several years ago, and we got about a million dollars, and we did some upgrades to our own facilities, but I think there, we should be looking at city operations. We should probably be looking at private sector development and determining whether there's some, maybe through incentives, we can encourage different environmental development. I mean, I think, I see those as three kind of aspects that could possibly happen, and I'm sure there are more.
What's the scope of work on the plan? They're not going to make recommendations for, this is just like a, what are they doing?
Well, the scope of work for that piece is to really provide for us an analysis of the carbon footprint, where greenhouse gases are being, and that will, and a set of recommendations as to how we might reduce them. Marry that up with the other part of it, which is the adaptations, and now you have a set of policy options, and ultimately comes back to the council as to which of those, for instance, what changes the building codes, what changes the energy, what changes the, you know, water, what that means in terms of policy.
But where will those recommendations come from? That's not going to be in this report.
Report will be the first part of that, and I would assume, and that's a poor question, I would assume that the Planning Commission would then be pulling some of those pieces together. And it is my hope that they would, because I think it needs a meaningful conversation. That would be a good place for it. But that's, I guess, to determine why I wanted to put this on the table, so we're having an open discussion about it as opposed to not having a discussion about it.
I just have a third question.
This was a council agenda item that was, that came out of council, and so I'm just wondering if anybody has, okay, so we're going to have a contract, but I don't know that this has truly been assigned to anyone.
It's managed.
Yeah, and so I really need to know if this is an Allen project. He needs to know that it's a project.
We'll, we'll...
That would be nice. You would appreciate that.
We'll figure it out.
Well, and to that point, I have had conversations with Allen, and I think I've shared that with the council on several points, saying, it's my assumption that this would be associated and connected in the planning department and come through their management, through the administration, and through the Planning Commission, so.
Well, I'd like to see a little bit of the Work Street, because I don't think we're going to, they're not going to give the information about how many feet are sea levels. This report that we've commissioned is not going to give them the information they need to know what the impacts are going to be on our, what land use things need to be changed or any of that. That sounds like a different report to me, and I'm worried that we're opening up a bit, we should just know what Work Street we're opening up. I saw Allen at a meeting the other night, and it looks like they're going to have to do a bunch of work on the Baker Heights redevelopment. I'm just a little worried that planning is, and Planning Commission is being asked to do a lot.
It's why I wanted to...
So it's another situation where more information is needed by council members? Yes?
This first step opens up a lot more work that I don't understand.
Right, okay, so, oh, yes. He's good. Okay, great. I want to thank you all for sticking to the timeframes and still having meaningful conversation. We'll get notes back to you as soon as we can. I'm going to ask President Murphy if you have any closing comments, and then I'm going to ask the mayor if he has any. So I gave him a little more notice than I gave you.
Pam, thank you very much. I think you did a beautiful job today facilitating, I really appreciate that. Staff, thank you for showing up today and giving up after Saturday. Citizens, thank you for sticking around. I'd like to just give a collective high five to the group, because I think this was a very productive meeting. I couldn't be more proud to be a part of this group, and, you know, as I've experienced in prior retreats and these types of settings in my business life and other nonprofits, it tends to bring everyone together. We see where we have commonality, we tend to have a better idea of where everyone's coming from, and so it really does help to allow us to work more effectively moving forward. And I really feel like we've made good progress. We haven't had one of these in, I don't know, five, six, seven years, so I'm very pleased with it, so thank you very much, everybody.
Great. Mayor Stephenson.
I would echo all of that, and, you know, I feel like the last several years, maybe in the feeling the restraints of having to have all of our business done in the public, we haven't had the opportunity to have much dialogue, and I think when we don't, there's suspicion, and there's, you know, what's that person up to, and the information isn't shared, and so I really appreciated today. I forget it's eight o'clock this morning, but I do now. But, you know, I think that we really have the foundation to do some great things, and, you know, what I realize is that we all come from different perspectives and have different views about stuff, but we all very much care and love the city, and we want what's best for it, and that's what we're all about, but I think, you know, the sky's the limit in terms of what we can do.
One last shout-out for Deb. Thank you so much for helping to get this started.